Time is now six fifty-four. March ninth, two thousand seventeen. I call this West Laco ID School Board Trustees to Order. Meeting of Board Trustees to Order. Let the record reflect that we have a full form. Item number three, Opening Prayer, Dr. Canales.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Pobal, there he is, to come up.
Good evening. The invocation will be delivered tonight by Monica Garcia, a third-grade reading and language arts teacher from Tony Rico Elementary.
Let's close our eyes and bar our heads. Heavenly Father, I thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon our students and our staff. I humbly come before you, asking that you guide our school board members in the decisions they will make tonight. Lord, I also ask that you bless our teachers and administrators, that you give them the strength and wisdom to guide our students. But above all, I ask that you open the gates of heaven and that you pour blessings upon each and every one of our students. I ask all this in your name, amen.
Item number four, Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Pledge.
Okay, for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, we have Joaquin Andres Garcia, a fifth-grade student at Tony Rico. If he can please step forward, thank you. And he is a son of Shakia Garcia and Norma and Roy Garcia. Joaquin attends Saint Joan of Arc and enjoys listening to readings, to the readings. Joaquin also likes to play soccer, basketball, and video games. He would like to attend the University of Texas in Austin and graduate with a degree in digital arts and animation. After graduating from UT, Joaquin would like to become an animator in Japan, or he would learn to speak Japanese and learn about the culture. If his parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Also with us is Alessandra Anayi Camacho, and she is a fourth-grade student at Tony Rico Elementary. She is the daughter of Javier and Lorena Camacho. Alessandra participates in UIL Music Memory and scored a perfect score at competition. Alessandra is also a Rico Rocket cheerleader and was selected as Rico Ambassador for Leader in Me. She enjoys attending CCE at Saint Joseph Catholic Church. She enjoys dancing, singing, and playing volleyball. She would like to attend the University of Texas Real Grand Valley and become a physician. If her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? All right, I'm going to hand it over to them as they take over with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Doctor? Doctor Camacho?
Doctor.
Doctor, doctor.
And Joaquin Garcia.
It's always great to see our kids when they're shooting for the stars and both of them trying to be doctors, that's great. Let's get it, let's get it done. Item number five, Awards and Recognitions.
Awards and recognition. The first one, I'd like to have any member of the K West staff, if they are here, can they please step forward? Please, Mike Gonzalez, Don Ramirez, Julio Olivares. Well, the K West staff recently returned from the Texas School Public Relations Association Annual Conference in Galveston. K West received two Best of Category medals in video electronic categories, Video News Package and Video News Information. Overall, the K West staff received two Best of Category medals, and we also received four gold medals and one silver medal. So I am the director of K West. So I just want to say, since I'm here, that I am just blessed with a great staff, and these individuals, they work very, very hard, no matter what we ask them. There was one time where we had three basketball games this year in different parts of the state of Texas, Corpus Christi, Laredo, and San Antonio, and they all went, traveled that night, we covered our games, and we all came back. So I just want to say congratulations to the K West staff, and thank you very much, guys, for everything you did. And these are the two medals that we received at the Teesboro Conference, and these are from school districts all across the state of Texas where we won Best of Category.
Carlos, we congratulate you and your team on a job well done and continue doing the expert work that you guys do. I mean, your, all of your work is awesome.
Thank you very much.
You guys are great. You didn't get a medal, Carlos?
They only gave us two. Next year, we'll try to win more.
And we have faith in you. Moving on to item number six, Public Comments. We have...
Let's do the recognition. Oh, we have more recognitions, I'm sorry.
More recognition. Let's go ahead and keep it here.
I was going to run away.
We are going to recognize first, we have the West Laco High School Wrestling Team, if they can please come out and be recognized, hold a big hand as they enter. Okay, so tonight, we'd like to congratulate the 2017 West Laco High School Boys Wrestling Team for an outstanding season. The boys' team clinched the South Texas Throwdown, the Tomas Garcés and Coyote Invitation, and also, they won the District sixteen-six A Championship. Members of the district championship team are Alex Sanchez, if you're here, please stand or please wave and be recognized. We also have Angel Torres, Samuel Shelley, Gilbert Romero, Tomas Garcés, and Emilio Reyna. Regional qualifiers are J.D. Rodriguez, is J.D. here? Okay, we have Joshua De Ojos, and we also have another regional qualifier, we have Noah Amaya. Okay. Now, state qualifiers, I think you guys are the state qualifiers, we have Manny Medeine, who's here. We also have David Anguiano. We have Chris Garcia. And another state qualifier, Caleb Muniz. We would also like to recognize their head coach, Rolando Becerra. If their parents are here, can you please stand and be recognized, parents of the wrestlers? Thank you very much, guys, congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Good job. We have right there another reason why West Laco is the right choice, you know, wrestling, we offer all the sports here, and for them to be qualifiers in the regionals, that's just another, another straw in our hat. So, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we'd like to continue on with the recognition, and tonight, if they are here, I know they are here, we'd like to congratulate the 2017 West Laco High School Basketball Teams for their outstanding seasons. All right, well, both the girls' team and the boys' team from West Laco qualified for the Sweet Sixteen. We're going to recognize the girls first, and the girls clinched the District thirty-one-six A Championship and have held this title for the past five years. The Lady Panthers, like I said earlier, also made the Sweet Sixteen for the fourth time in five years. And as I say your name, if you can please step forward so you can be recognized, members of the district championship team, we have Amber Deluna, Sabrina Cerda, Leslie Ibarra, Jasmine Sines, Leah Solis, Roberta Perez, Nikki Garza, Aliya Kantu. Several team members won postseason distinctions, making the Texas Girls Coaches Association Academic All-State Team and the Texas Association of Basketball Coaches Academic All-State Team are Jaylene Longoria, Annika Arce, also Shayla Tamez, Lily Rodriguez. Now Shayla Tamez and Lily Rodriguez not only were all academic, but they also received All-District Honorable Mentions. We also have an All-District Honorable Mention distinction for Kirsten Padilla. We'd also like to recognize Jada Lopez, who was awarded the All-District Second Team And we also would like to recognize a First Team All-District Selection, and she was also on the All-State Academic Teams, Andrea Villegas. Moving on now, we have First Team All-District Unanimous Emily Sines. This player was the Defensive Player of the Year, was also selected to the Academic Teams, Gabby Garza. And voted unanimous District thirty-two-six A Most Valuable Player, was also named to the Texas Girls Association All-State All-Star Team, and she will also represent West Laco at the All-Star Game in Austin this summer, this is Brianna Peña. And of course, this wouldn't happen without their wonderful coaching staff, head coach Griselda Fino, with assistants David Medina, also Susana Gonzalez, Cindy Smith, Brian Smith, and Randy Moses. Congratulations to all. If there are any, any members of their family, if they're here, can you please stand and It doesn't happen without moms and dads, correct, guys? Thank you very much, ladies, congratulations.
Ladies, congratulations on all your hard work, and it paid off, and coaches, you did an extremely wonderful job in taking these ladies and letting, letting them, everybody know where West Laco is. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'd like to recognize the boys' team. This is a team that also qualified for the Sweet Sixteen, so it was just awesome to see two teams from West Laco ISD qualify for the Sweet Sixteen, and the West Laco Boys did extremely well this season, as they finished the season with a thirty-four and six overall record, and they won their third consecutive district and bi-district title. The Panthers also clinched the area title, regional quarterfinal, and like I said earlier, they made the Sweet Sixteen at the regional tournament this year in Laredo. The Panthers are also ranked number fourteen in the state of Texas. Members of the state-ranked team are Mark Savala, Bobby Kantu, A.J. Gonzalez, Carlos Baez, Ryan Cisneros, Isaiah Garcia. Several team members also received postseason honors, winning All-District Honorable Mentions, and they are Matthew Olmeda, Khalil Fino, Making All-District Second Team are Justice Free, Jesús Baez, and Derek Sedeno. Selected to the First Team All-District, Jordan Young. The district's Newcomer of the Year, Safi Fino. And selected the thirty-two-six A Most Valuable Player, Braxton Blumquist. We would also like to recognize the coaching staff, head coach Gabe Valdez. His assistants are Joe Yáñez, Mike Yáñez, Trey Smith, Joe Garcia, Nate Salazal, and Isaac Camacho. If the parents, or the parents of the boys' basketball team, if they are here, I know at least one parent is here, can they all stand and please be recognized? Thank you very much, gentlemen, and congratulations. Caleb Ibarra, we also like to recognize him, he was not on the list. Okay, we do have one more announcement for recognition. And of these three up here, can you step forward? Thank you, boys. So tonight, we would like to congratulate our district's top spellers. These students placed in the top three and took part in the regional spelling bee. The third-place spelling bee winner is Jonathan Alvarado. Our second-place winner is Nathan Gift. And our first-place district spelling bee winner is Roman Valenciano. We would also like to recognize their sponsor, Elsa Robles. And if their parents are here or any members of their family, please stand and be recognized.
I want to congratulate all the young, young folks that just went by our stage here, and, you know, their hard work has paid off, and hard work always pays off, you know, and here, here in West Laco, we strive to do the best we can, and, and we do. You know, a lot of these teams put the city of West Laco and West Laco High School, West Laco East, on, on, on the map, you know. Some people didn't know where West Laco was, now they do.
Mo, I'd like to, before we move on, I'd like to also congratulate the boys' basketball team from West Laco East, they are our bi-district champions from the, from the east side of our district, so congratulations to them.
Moving on to item number six, Public Comments. We have several people that signed up, it appears that they are all here for the same, same topic. If y'all would want to come up together and choose a spokesperson, that would be recommended. We have Felix Rangel, Rebecca Galván, Raúl Rodríguez, Elizabeth Sanchez, and Claudia García.
I believe the first two spoke during the workshop.
Yes, the first two spoke, and what I'm going to ask, can y'all come together and would y'all be happy with that, and have one spokesperson? Or y'all can all speak if you want to.
Well, I think we have different points, especially we have a parent I would hate to take responsibility.
Okay, well, let's start then with Raúl Rodríguez. Let me read something to you before you take off. You are to address only matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any district employee or board member. We will not tolerate any disruptive behavior or any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting. Now, earlier, it was a workshop, so the board was able to comment back and forth and talk to you as parents. This is the actual meeting, so we will not be able to comment on your statements today. You have five minutes.
My name is Raúl Rodríguez, I live at five León de León, and I am a staff member at Roosevelt Elementary. Good evening, Dr. Canales, school board members, and of course, the big audience we have here today. I'm representing Roosevelt Elementary, which is formerly Louise Black Elementary, and it's six hundred seven students and sixty-four staff members. FDR, or Roosevelt School actually, was established in nineteen fifty-five. There have been many administrations and staff over the years, but I'd like to focus on its current inhabitants. Now, perhaps you're thinking, you know, maybe it's a bit too premature, or, you know, we're kind of jumping the gun, nothing's decided yet, but when your home and your family are threatened in any way, the right thing to do is, is to respond and to try to defend it as much as possible. And Roosevelt Elementary, also known as, better known as FDR, is a family, and I am here, and so many others as well, to speak and be heard on its behalf. Back in the summer of two thousand seven, in one weekend, mind you, we did move from Louise Black to FDR. Since then, we've endured freezing temperatures, torrential downpours, the massive flood of two thousand fifteen, but in spite of all that, and then some, we have proudly educated over fifteen hundred students, many more if you count our time at Louise Black Elementary. From Elizabeth Aguilar, who is in her first year of teaching, to Mrs. Norma Garza, who has been an amazing math teacher for thirty-five years, we've offered passionate, quality instruction with the help of two hundred forty years of non-teaching staff experience and seven hundred thirty-nine years of classroom experience for a whopping combined nine hundred seventy-nine years worth of experience in shaping young minds here at West Laco ISD. And some of those students have gone on to great things, for example, Mr. Patrick Kennedy, board member, he was one of my students. Former member, board member Adrian Gonzalez has sent all three of his kids, A.J., starting QB for the Panthers, Alexi, current WHS cheerleader, and we have Aiden as a third grader. Diego Rodríguez, who recently signed his letter of intent to play at A&amp;M Kingsville, was one of ours. His older brother, Desi, former starting pan, football player for the Panthers. Irene Infante, we've had a Gates Millennium Scholarship recipient. Last year's valedictorian, Helen Liu, from West Laco East, came through our doors. Potentially, this year's valedictorian at West Laco High, I will not mention her name, also came to Roosevelt. The first ever West Laco Idol winner, Celeste Vázquez, as a fourth grader, was, was ours. We've had students attend and graduate from some of the best public and private universities in Texas. One of our more notable ex-alumni is Misha Kri, was one of the best football players in all of West Laco and all of the Rio Grande Valley. He was one of mine and several colleagues as well. Now, on to current students. We have KFDR, we have a student news team that's probably the best in the district. They produce a student, a school-wide daily broadcast on a daily basis. We have the Folklorico Dance Team, the only one in West Laco ISD at the elementary level. We have a guitar club, the only one to offer stringed instrument instruction at the elementary level. Obviously, we have district UIL, you know, placements every year in various activities. Our elementary robotics champions have been from Roosevelt, two out of the last three years. We have three years of school-sponsored Boys and Girls Club basketball team, where the entire team is from Roosevelt. Since two thousand ten, over seventy students have been sponsored for the basketball and baseball city leagues from our FDR Sports Fund. The Leader in Me Junior Lighthouse Team meets and greets our visitors and our parents, and they completely run our six-week awards assembly. We started producing student leaders long before some of the other elementaries caught on with the Leader in Me. We have seventy-nine scholarships, have given out scholarships to graduating seniors, totaling more than thirty-one thousand dollars. Money to these students that have walked and been in our classrooms and have walked our halls, a tradition that sadly will, might cease, and these students won't, won't get a chance to get that scholarship because there won't be a school, you know, for kids to raise the money for them.
You have one minute.
Thank you. We have eleven staff members that were Roosevelt students back in the day, and over the years, we have or have had seventy-one staff kids slash grandkids that have attended our school because we believe in what we do and how we do it. Currently, we have Texas State Rep Martinez, his daughter's at our school, and I can guarantee you, not a single staff member has ever had their child at an IDEA school instead of having it at FDR when they've been there. Lastly, you know, we implore the board, don't make a decision based on numbers, don't, don't make a business choice, make the right choice, save FDR.
Elizabeth Salinas, want to read you the same thing. You are to address only matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any district employee or board member. We will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting. Now, your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
My name's Elizabeth Sanchez, my address is one forty-five ten Santa Fe Avenue, Mercedes. I'm currently the data entry at Roosevelt Elementary, and I just wanted to clarify some information from the previous workshop. We currently have six hundred and seven students enrolled as of today, which eighty of those are student transfers that they choose to come to Roosevelt, and we affect all elementaries within our school district. Eleven from Sam Houston, seven from Silva, eight from Gonzalez, six from Margot, ten from Airport, ten from Memorial, ten from Northbridge, eight from Rico, seven from Kellecler, and three from Ibarra. You have also mentioned that the students are in the bus for about an hour. Our students get picked up starting at three forty-five, so that is another factor why they are being, getting home so late. Our students have never missed our, our school because they missed the bus. Even those from La Mesa, Los Amigos, from mile eleven and twelve, they make it. They might call us, miss, we're running late, we missed the bus, or we have a flat tire, we are having trouble with the car, but they make it, and... Yes, our attendance was bad this past week, but it was due to the flu, fever, vomiting. We're currently experiencing a lot of that illnesses at our campus. We've only lost six students at our campus to IDEA, and we've gained some back as well this school year. Rezoning, it is a good idea, but why consider closing FDR? Please consider something else for us. Also, a new campus was mentioned on the north side. Could it also be possible that perhaps what Sam Houston got offered as far as they moved to Ibarra, and then when Sam Houston got fixed, then they got their campus back over here, and Ibarra was a new campus? Maybe that's a possibility that can be considered for us. We've already had so many changes at our campus, we lost a great leader, but we have gained a wonderful new leader that is taking us in a great direction, and we'd like to see a little bit more of that. And as you saw, we, our, our parents are very supportive, and they do want our FDR to continue to be open, so just please consider everything.
Claudia García, let me read you the same comment. You are to address only matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any district employee or board member. We will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will not, you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting. Your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Claudia García. I currently, right now, I'm staying at twenty-three eighteen East Ten Street, but I do, mind you, I live in Edinburgh, and I drive almost every day to bring my kids to FDR, and my kids have never been late. And I have two, a boy and a girl, one in first, one in kinder, and they live at FDR. I remember one, one summer, they went to a summer program in Sam Houston, and it was hard for my daughter to get used to that school. She didn't want to go to the summer school, she wanted to go to her school, which is FDR. So please do not close FDR, for the kids' sake.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, superintendent's report. Dr. Canales.
Ms. Good evening, we have four presentations this time. We have insurance by Mr. De La Rosa. I'll take student enrollment and ADA along with Mr. Sanchez. Campus rezoning, I'll take that one. And then curriculum and instruction, student achievement, from Ms. Peterson. So we'll go in that order.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Canales, members of the board. This, the slides that we're gonna be presenting for the insurance report has a little bit more information that's normally presented. We are pretty much halfway through the fiscal year, so the end of the quarter. I'd like to go ahead and start with our medical claims. Last year at this time, we spent approximately $5 million on medical claims, of course. This year, through the month of February, it's been at $6.2 million. It's an approximate increase of $1.2 million. And you can see the bottom kinda shows the trend is, is, as hard been going. It's kinda keeps the same, we kinda go up, we kinda go down, up and down. The spike in November, as you can see, we had a pretty heavy year in claims. That is due to the end of the stop-loss year. We are in a 12-15 contract. So all the claims that were incurred back in early, were all kind of processed to make sure that we get through the end of the stop-loss year. Other factors that, that affect medical claims, of course, I'll go ahead and get through that in an additional slide. The next one is our prescription benefit program, with Max Care, of course. Last year at this time, we spent approximately $1.6 million on prescription drugs. Versus this year, it's approximately 1.7. That's an increase of about $96,000 this year over last year. Considering the trend of increasing drug prices, this really, actually, we're doing very well as, as on our prescription drugs. And of course, the trend, of course, you can tell, has been pretty stable. And of course, the difference in cost has been pretty stable as well. Does, the green line does drop down. We had a small decrease this month in the number of prescription drugs that we paid. But that's looking very promising for the year. Just to give the board an example of some of the higher-cost drugs that we see every month. Of course, we have one prescription that's, that's pretty expensive that we're paying. Of course, on the top, it's over 35 grand a month that the plan incurs. And of course, you see other drugs such as Humira, Ambrel, Victoza. These are the drugs that you see advertised on TV every day. I know Phil Mickelson is, is a spokesman for one of them, as you can tell that these are, you know, pretty high-cost drugs. And of course, that being said, you know, we do take care of our employees and, and be able to provide these medications for them.
Mike?
Yes.
I don't mean to cut you off. Going back to Caremark or Zen, Xenazine tab, 35,000?
Yes.
What does it cost to the employee?
$100.
And we pay 35?
35,000, correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
Moving on, of course, these are our administrative fees, or our fixed fees, that we pay every month to administer the plan. It's 1.4 million this time last year. It's actually, we look, we have a small decrease this year over last year, but that will even out throughout the year as we pay our transitional reinsurance fees to Obamacare, which would be the second half. They'll, they'll, they'll go ahead and catch up to themselves. Finally, total claims, prescription drugs, and fixed costs. We have a total of $9.3 million so far. That's an approximate increase of 1.275 million, or about a 14% increase this year over last year. And as you can tell, the majority, or the majority of those expenses are, of course, in medical claims. Some of the reasons that our medical claims are, of course, increasing, we have had, and I did mention this a couple of months ago, we have had an increase in the number of members that are enrolled in our plan. So in February, we had a total of 3,204 members, February 16 versus this past February, 3,385 members. That's a pro, that's 181 additional members that we insure and pay claims on this year that we did not have last year. Finally, individual stop-loss claims. Last year at this time, we had five, and our specific limit was $100,000. This year, we currently have four. So we did have to raise our specific deductible to 125,000 because the premium on the $100,000 specific, quite frankly, was not obtainable by the district anymore. So we are assuming additional risk, but we are seeing reduced premium. Some of the things that drive up costs, of course, you have a catastrophic diagnosis summary here, and this is just really for the board's information. Our top categories are congenial malformations. In layman's terms, those are premature births, or any babies that are born ill. Disease of the circulatory system, as you can tell, that's a pretty high-dollar expense. And in layman's terms, those are your strokes, your heart attacks, other types of coronary conditions. And then finally, neoplasms, and that's, that, in layman's terms, is cancer. Unfortunately, we do, we do have employee, a high number of employees that are, that are going through cancer treatment at this time. But of course, we take care of them, just like everything else, and make sure we give them the best benefits possible. Any questions on this before I move on to the workers' comp slide? The workers' comp slide, it's very slimmer to what we've had in the past. Budgeted last year, half a million dollars, I'm sorry, budgeted this year, half a million dollars versus last year's 300,000. We'd had 58 claims this year, year-to-date, versus last year, it's 61, so we do have a few less. Total medical claims, prescriptions, admin cause, indemnity, everything else wrapped into one that we've incurred so far has been 163,990 dollars versus this time last year's 179,000. So we have incurred significantly less this year. Total paid in February, inclusive of all claim years, as I mentioned, these claims that we pay go back several years. This year, or this month, we paid 80,769 dollars versus last year's 63,085 dollars. This is a fairly high increase, and I did look into it, and this is a claim that we had that was two years old that we had to put additional money into for some surgery that was required. Total reserve, about 367,000 dollars approximately. So we're doing very well in our workers' comp.
Thank you. Questions? Any questions?
Oh, sorry. Questions?
Have you, do we have a, what was that position? Safety consultant? Goes around the district safety, kinda like our OSHA guy there.
We have, as I mentioned, the gentleman I had moved on to bigger and better things. As of right now, I'm working with human resources, we're being very cognizant of the budget. So as of right now, we have not filled that position.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so the next part's on enrollment, we're looking at 26 weeks. I also have some data by six weeks that I will share in a few minutes. You still see for most of the campuses, a difference in, to the negative, from 2015, 2016 to 2016, 2017, from last year to this year, for a grand total difference in enrollment of about 450 students. When you look at this week, 26 weeks, well, last week, 26 weeks into school, last year versus this year. And that breaks down, if you look at the next slide, it breaks down by campus levels. The difference for elementary schools is 345 to the negative, to the red. Middle schools, 88. High schools, 17. Alternative schools, 16. For a total of, oh, then we have the ELF, which is at a positive 16, for a total difference of 450. So one of the things that we're looking at, and we're talking to staff and would like your input, is about different ways you'd like to see this enrollment data. I have, I work with Juan Roelis, who's in the audience, and where's Rick? And Rick Flatus, who's back there in the audience, and we're meeting to look at data. One of the things we looked at was six weeks, by six weeks. The first six weeks are difference, it was to the negative, by 331. Second six weeks are the 12th week of school. It was at 470 to the difference. By the 18th week of school, or the third six weeks, it went up to 480. Our trend now, at the end of the 24th week, right, or the fourth six weeks, was back down to 470. So we wanna look at, start looking at trends in different ways and working with our departments and our campus leaders on that. So with that said, we're open to feedback and what would be beneficial in looking at data.
Well, one thing that I have to say is that, that ELF Academy, which we started, was it two years ago?
Last year, sir.
Last year?
One year ago.
Or else we'd be in trouble. You know, we would, the ELF is giving us 300, approximately 300 students. So that, we'd be down 300 more, had that not happened. And I know that we have a, an item coming up for a marketing plan, and I think that's gonna be very important moving forward. And at the same time, every employee has to, has to be prepared to market the school out. Everything that we do, we have to sell ourselves. I mean, it, it's not like it used to be before, where the kids are gonna come. We're the, we're the only ticket in town. Now, we have to sell the district every day and, and resell it, you know? It's, it's gonna be constant. You know, it's not, we're not just gonna be sitting there waiting with open hands anymore. You know, it's, it's a changing times, and, and there's competition. So we need to be prepared to, to fight for our kids, so.
Moving forward, go ahead, Dr. Canales.
Okay, and now we have ADA. Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. President, Dr. Canales, members of the board. The next slide shows the ADA, average ADA, average daily attendance of our students for the first four, six weeks of the 2016, 17 school year. The first six weeks, we had 210 ADA less compared to the previous year. You can see in the figure there. The second six weeks, we were 232 less. The third six weeks, 260, and on the fourth six weeks, 251. The average of the four, six weeks together is 16,96, the actual ADA. Last year was 16,334, which is 238 less. The budget that we prepared was on 16,100. We wanted to be conservative, just in case, went down, and it did. So right now, we are 4 ADA less than what we budgeted, which is anywhere between 3,000 to, 3,600 dollars. So we're almost no, no significance. If it continues lower, we might have an effect based on our migrant students. We're still checking on that part. We may have to use the entire six, six weeks instead of just four. And we might lose a little bit of ADA, stay funds through ADA, but we don't know yet. If we adjust the four, six weeks like usual, we'll be okay. But the ADA is the revenue. Any questions on that?
So how much is it per child on the ADA?
Between 7,500 to 9,000 per ADA.
So on the 238, it's?
Well, we, we budgeted 16,100.
Right.
So the current is 16,96, so we're only four short from the budget, right. It is 238 less than last year, yes.
This is alarming.
Yep.
You know, when you, when you budgeted for 16,100, you were playing it safe. And very safe. You know, and yet, we fell below that.
Right.
You know, so, so we are losing students and, and we need to act now. We need to act now.
Andres, can you explain how that works with the migrant population?
Yes, the, the state made some changes on the way they evaluate the student that qualify to be migrant, to qualify as migrant. And when we don't have a certain percentage of students that are migrant stu, when we have enough students that are migrant, since the migrant students leave early in the year and come back late from working, they allow us to take only four, the best four, six weeks of the year. But when we don't have enough, we don't qualify like a migrant school district. So we have to use the entire year. So we have to use the entire six, six weeks to do their averaging.
And where are we at right now? What's?
Right now, we're okay. Like I said, just four less, but last year, the fifth, sixth week was lower than we had budgeted. And as you can see, it went down from 172, 115, then 39, so we lost 80 there. So it might go a little lower.
Dr. Canales, what do you have in place right now to bring our numbers up?
In terms of attendance, we're looking at attendance on a weekly basis because, you know, we have less students. So we need to have our less students coming to school on a regular basis. So looking at attendance patterns and having conversations with campus principals, with the nurse, find out what's going on. You know, we heard an example today that there was a week where it was bad with the flu, you know? So finding out what's going on, how to get the children to school, how to communicate the importance of coming to school every single day, for instruction, for the, the other great things that happen at school. One of the things that we're doing is we're starting our site-based decision-making, or restarting it in a couple of weeks. We have, that, that site-based decision-making will consist of several committees, subcommittees. There's a student welfare committee that, as a team, for members who are elected, the teachers are elected by their campuses, and they will select teams to be on. And that's one of the purposes of site-based decision-making, as required by Texas Education Code, to take a look at things that are important to the success of children, for people to collaborate from campuses to departments, and to come up with plans, that they become something that we all do as a district. That we do as a district, and that we monitor, and we ask ourselves, did it work? Did it not work? We look at data on a continuous basis, and then we try other things. So there's, you know, that we're looking forward to starting that committee, getting it going. It will cover everything from curriculum, instruction, to discipline, student welfare, staffing, retention, and recruitment. So we start that in a couple of weeks, by the end of March. And Ms. Benya, Janie Benya in the audience, and Ms. Sue Peterson are helping to lead that so that we can get going and involve our entire Westlaco ISD community in the process. So we can get this done. Let's figure it out.
Well, I know for a fact that Westlaco's not the only district being affected by student loss and ADA. Javier, I believe that we've discussed several times, and you've given some numbers that are alarming also for your district up in...
Over 2,000.
2,000 students lost. That, that hurts. Dr. Rivera, and Ed Calchelsa, how are you, how are things faring?
We haven't lost kids yet. We're at a plus, at a plus 30 from last year. But.
But.
For next year, might be different.
Yeah.
Ideas moving in to Ed Calchelsa.
Yeah.
Not this August, but the following August.
Yeah.
So we'll be affected.
Well, we need to be prepared, and there were some comments made earlier on, on, on building schools, you know? We, we need to build, you know, when Dr. Rivera was here, I remember his comment was, we are second to none.
Right.
You know, we haven't built a school in a while, and we need to get, you, Andres, need to find us some money.
Doctor school?
Let's turn them upside down.
Yeah. You know, it's, I know that there's some, some of the architects out there have ideas, different ways of building, some financing, we need to, whatever we need to do, but our buildings need to be like it used to be, second to none. And, and we need to take that, you know, into effect, that, that our kids going into those dis, into those buildings will, will like it, you know? We just witnessed earlier today the love that parents and kids had for Roosevelt, you know? And, 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 and that's one of our oldest schools, if not the oldest.
I think utilizing, Dr. Rivera, you know, they just built baseball stadiums, renovated their football stadium. He knows where to find the money. Pick up your phone, call Dr. Rivera, please.
Just, I just.
If you can help in any way to help Dr. Canales and Andres to find the monies.
That we met.
Yes, we did, made, got some ideas.
Get this ball going.
Just one thing I wanted to add, you know, as somebody who's been here in Westlaco ISD since December 1st, and even before then, when I started going to events, there's a lot of great things, a lot of pride in our community. And it goes to about how do we message that out? Because anybody who goes to any performance, or walk through any one of our schools, gets a feeling of, this is a great place to be. So looking forward and how we get that message out together, as a community, to the entire community. It's really important, but it, it's an incredible feeling to be part of our district, and you see it from the people that walk in our doors.
Yeah, thank you, Doc.
Just one quick question. When was the last time that we went under the budget on the ADA?
The last time? Two, two years ago.
Two years ago?
It was a little bit, it was in March, but yes.
Okay.
It was in March.
All right.
Any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, for, uh, the rezoning piece, we had a workshop, uh, presented the options, uh, have some next steps to include presentations to community, and then we'll be coming back to the board.
With more information.
With more information, indeed.
Okay, yes, we did have a workshop, and, uh, there was a lot of public comment, and we appreciate the, the input that people gave us, and, and it is, we do, we do hear it. We listen to you because the people are, are who put us here, you know? We, we represent the people and, and, uh, and they are hurt. So, uh, we will take that into account and, uh, when we make our decision and, uh, move forward, so. Thank you, Doctor.
And now, we're gonna talk about curriculum and instruction and student achievement. Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, good evening. We're just gonna give a quick update on what's been happening in curriculum and instruction this year. For leadership development, the campus administrators have attended workshops throughout the year on data and learning how to better analyze the data, use the data reports that we have. We provided three different days of staff development for that. Campus administrators have also completed an average of 83 documented classroom visits since September 1st. Some have much more than that. Um, these are documented in alignment to our T-Test appraisal system, so the teachers are, have been provided more ongoing feedback and coaching. Uh, district leadership's been working to learn as much as possible about the new accountability system and share that information with campus leaders. And we have analyzed this semester's CBAs and benchmarks in alignment to what Lead Forward is projecting as the standards for the spring testing. And even though our ADA has dipped, average daily, the, the campuses have more students attending on a daily basis. So, our overall enrollment is down, but the students have better attendance than they've had in the past, and of course, if they're in school, uh, they're learning more. So, the principals have worked very hard on that. Um, the strategists have met with, uh, teachers throughout the year at the grade-level meetings, revising curriculum as needed, analyzing test scores, uh, talking about what's happening. We have done a significant, uh, amount of work in building teacher skills and teaching guided reading, and I have some reading results for you that will show that, including recently a two-day session for four representatives from each elementary campus presented by experts in the field of, uh, reading. And that will be followed up with more, uh, training for our K-2 teachers later in April. And we've also had intensive professional development and coaching in writing instruction and purchased a new writing curriculum for grades K through five. Uh, what I want to share with you before we go into the, um, achievement on our, our tests is the new performance levels that are being proposed by the commissioner. In the past, we've talked about satisfactory, post-secondary, ready, and advanced. Uh, that third column has the new performance labels, and, uh, a student who does not meet satisfactory levels, uh, will be, that does not meet, that's a failed test score. Um, however, the next category is called approaching grade level, and this is somewhat deceiving as it is a passing score on the test, but it's gonna be called approaches. And then, the next level up is meets grade level, and that's actually at the post-secondary ready standard. The state is saying that if a student is scoring at the meets grade level, it's indicative of a 60%, uh, chance of college-level success in math and English once they get there. They've tracked a cohort of students for, uh, over a period of time into colleges at, uh, in Texas, and this is the score level they say students need to be successful. Uh, master's grade level, they have a 75% chance of being successful. So, we're, um, wanting our students to score at the meets and masters level, and we have been tracking that on the assessments this semester. Some of what I show you will not have, uh, meets because we haven't tracked that on everything. This, to me, is the, the slide that, uh, shows the work that our early elementary teachers and the principals at the elementary schools have done in reading this year. We have significantly more students reading on grade level on the January 2017 report. This is measured on a Fontis-Pennell individual reading inventories, uh, that teachers administrators administer to the students. And you can see at the first grade, we have 18% more students reading on grade level, uh, in January this year over last year. A 10% increase in second grade, 8% at third, 5% at fourth grade, and 11% at fifth grade. So, we're very proud of the work that's been done by our reading teachers on the elementary schools because if a student can read, they're more likely to be successful.
What would you attribute those gains to?
A lot of teacher training, teacher support, classroom visits, and a lot of hard work.
Is there anything else we can do to add to that?
Um, not at this time. We're, we're, we've invested a significant amount of money in, uh, materials for the campuses, including leveled bookrooms. Um, they weren't being used to the extent we felt they should be, which is why we brought in Fontis-Pennell trainers a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Mrs. Chamberlain had been doing a lot of work, but she needed support, and she recommended that, so we, um, it's either side one or state compensatory. Mr. Rivera might jump up behind me in a minute, but, um...
Suspended.
Federal, federal funding and, and has helped fund that training. And then, we're going to be following up on that training later this month in April. Uh, we've also, uh, purchased classroom libraries for our K-2 schools on the northern tier to enhance the amount of books that the teachers have in the classroom. So, we've, we've sunk some significant resources in, but there's been money available for that, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome. These are some of the results in, uh, the student achievement in English Language Arts and benchmarks and CBAs that we've been giving, um, throughout the year. We are getting ready to test our fifth and eighth grade, uh, reading students, uh, the week of, of March 28th. We'll start that. We are also getting ready to test in fourth and seventh grade writing, and the English one and English two benchmarks will be, or, uh, star exams will be administered the end of March. So, we've been tracking that progress very carefully. We see some growth, we see some no change. Mrs. Chamberlain's working very closely with the elementary schools, middle schools and high schools at this point, to do really what we're saying is last minute at this point because the testing is just two weeks away, and one of those weeks is spring break. But, um, we feel confident that we will see gains in all of those areas. A reminder that the fifth and eighth grade students have the opportunity to retest in May, so we will get those results, um, analyze them in April, and get those students that need to, to retest. In math, um, it says benchmark two at the top, but it's really a, a mix of benchmark two and, um, content-based assessments, which just test the particular six weeks. We did have some challenges here in, uh, third grade and sixth grade, you'll see, or fifth grade rather, where we didn't have a lot of gain. Ms. Lopez has been on the campuses, talked to the administrators and the teachers, and every administrator she got to already had a plan of attack in place. The third grade test shows a drop, but it was a very different test than what we gave last year, so it's really not a fair comparison year to year. It was better aligned to the star. Um, we still feel confident that there will be growth in math, um, when we have the star results this spring. And again, every campus had a plan in place, uh, before she got there, and she's been able to provide support in the classroom for the teachers. In science, uh, we do not, we, we did not run, uh, meets, um, for this, these results. These are the, uh, December results before we had the information from the state about the change in the standards. But, um, that's, the, uh, first column is, would be the approaches. The numbers at the top are the range of those scores depending on the level of the test. And again, they're just projections at this time. We never know for sure till we actually give the exam, but we have seen increases in fifth and eighth grade, science, which are promising. Um, and then, we have, uh, no change right now in biology at the approaches, uh, grade level. However, the master's grade level, which is that top level of performance, we did see a gain. So, we wanna see gains all along the way. To receive that A in, uh, index one for the letter system, we need to have 90% of our students scoring at approaches, 60% at meets, and 30% at masters. That'll give us a, an A in index one, so that's what we're aiming for. Um, social studies, um, is only tested at eighth grade in high school, so we do not run, um, the approaching scores for the non-tested grades. We run those at a 70% and a 90% at the non-tested grades, and then, we run them like a star at the, uh, eighth grade in U.S. history. We're still struggling with U.S. history. Um, the benchmark one did show a drop over last year. However, the content-based assessment that was given recently was a little bit more promising. Um, so, we're, uh, Mr. Cantu is spending significant amount of time in eighth grade in U.S. history classrooms. Uh, eighth grade, though, looks good. The middle school data was very promising, and we saw a lot of growth there. Um, again, we have our, our actual star tests that we will be administering on March 28th, 29th, and 30th. The campuses have, um, completed all of the training for that, and we're ready to go. The materials are, have been coming in. Mrs. Alonese's office is working on getting those ready to get to the campuses. Um, we will have scores for the fifth and eighth grade math and reading exams by April 18th, at which time we'll examine those, look at what the students who didn't, um, meet the mastery levels, uh, will retest, and we'll have a plan of instruction for them. We also have another set of benchmarking that takes place the second week of April, which will give us data in the, uh, areas that we are not testing until May, so that we can plan our instruction between, um, the middle of April and the middle of May when those tests take place. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Good job. If we can do anything to help you with math, we're here. Moving on to item number eight, consent agenda. Uh, I'm gonna start on my left. Uh, Dr. Rodriguez, do you have anything to pull?
No.
Dr. Rivera?
None.
Isidoro?
None.
Oscar? Andrew?
No, sir.
Patrick?
No, Mr. President.
Okay. Since, uh, there are no items that anybody is, uh, pulling, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Patrick Kennedy to approve the consent agenda presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Dr. Canales, uh, we have several people that are donating items, and, and I know that, uh, as customary, you will send out some letters of thank you and appreciation.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Moving on to item number nine, discussion items. Item A, interim financial report for the month of February 2017.
Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, members of the board. I would like to go over the financial report for February 28, 2017, on the general fund of the revenue that we budgeted. We budgeted 25 million for local funds. We have received 22,647,000, which is 90.5%. Uh, the biggest, uh, block there is the property taxes that we collected, uh, a lot of them already. On the state sources, we have 129 million. We have collected 67.4 million, which equals to 52.2%. And on the federal revenues, it's 14.7 million. We have received 7.5 million already, which equals 51.3%. Total revenues is 168.9 million. We received 97.6 million for a total of 57.8%. On expenditures, the total budget on expenditures is 100, 172.6 million dollars. We have spent through February 28, or encumbered, 81.3 million, which equals to 47.1%. Uh, and we're at the middle of the year, we're about 50%, so we are below the average on expenditures and a little above on the revenue, so we're doing good.
You see any items that cause any concern? Should cause any concern?
No, no, I don't.
Dr. Rivera?
I'm okay. Looks good.
Okay, thank you, good job. Moving on to item num- item B, acknowledgement of Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for January 2017, current taxes and delinquent taxes.
Yes, uh, this is the report for collections for January 2017. We did not get February, even as of today, we haven't received this yet. Uh, the collections through February 31, 2017, for current taxes were 19.7 million. Out of 24.3, there were levied, which equals to forty, 81.2%. The prior year, it was 80.1% on current collections levy, which is 1% higher this year compared to last year. Now, the delinquent taxes, which is the prior year levies that we had, out of 4.4 million, we have collected 550,000, which equals to 12.79%. The prior year, we had collected 12.89, which equals to 0.1% less than last year. It was almost the same. Any questions on that?
No. Every month, have they, uh, had a positive impact, uh, for this past year? Almost every month?
Oh, certainly, yeah. The delinquents were a little bit lower one of the months before.
Right. But in general, that's, they've been positive very much?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, mov- moving on to item 10, discussion and possible action items. Item A, discussion and possible action for the board to rank the marketing services companies and select one marketing service company to create and implement a marketing plan for Wesaco ISD, RFP number 17 dash 02 dash 32. Dr. Canales.
Yes, at this time, we'll, uh, ask for the ranking and the selection of the marketing service company. Mr. Andres is passing out the ranking forms. We do have some information from the district-wide, um, committee, the district committee, looking at marketing forums to also share. So, Andres, walk us through the steps.
There were some presentations, uh, last, uh, few days ago, and I believe, uh, some of the board members were not present, and, uh, I believe administration forwarded some,
Links.
Some links to where you g- uh, gentlemen could see the, the presentations. Did everybody get a chance, uh, to see those, uh, presentations? And if not, uh, I don't know if we can, if you wanna opt out on, on, uh, ranking, being that you have not seen any of the presentations?
I was one of them that wasn't here for the meeting, but I did get the, uh...
Okay.
USB, and I, and I did see it.
Perfect, perfect. That's, that was the intent, the, get everybody on the same page and get all the information. That way, we could get, uh, the best, uh, company for the job.
I guess I ha- I guess I have a question.
Yes.
To the superintendent. Why, why is the board ranking these firms? I think it should be administration. Have you all ranked them?
We did, sir, we did on...
No, the...
Oh, the, the committee has ranked them. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Dr. Rivera. Uh, when this item was written, it was written that the board would rank. We did have an internal committee. The committee did rank this week, so Mr. Andres Sanchez also has the tally sheet that the committee submitted today to his office to show you how administration ranked the firms that we saw. All committee members that voted viewed the three, the, the firms' presentations. We had a lengthy discussion, the, the pros and the cons of going with the best firm for Wesaco ISD, and do they have this form in front of them?
No.
Okay.
So, so what was the recommendation from the committee?
The recommendation ranked number one with 14 points was Image House. Recommendation, uh, ranked number two, Pink Eight Media with 10 points. And winning, uh, Richard Carver got zero points, and State Guard got zero points. So, the committee recommended Image House Media as the number one recommendation.
Well, so that is your recommendation?
That's one that the committee submitted to, to superintendent. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I don't know. Uh, I guess we can rank them, if that's what the agenda says.
I believe the item, the item states clearly that, uh...
Press to rank them.
The board to rank them, and...
Okay.
And the reason, uh, that, uh, administration is just as a guideline, 'cause they, they were all, they also ranked them. So, I guess we can, uh, compile all the, all the scores, including the administrations, and, and move forward with that.
I'm okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andres, all we have to do is rank the total score, correct? Just the total?
Well, I didn't elaborate. On the, for the ranking, there's, since there are four companies, the company that you like better, we're number best, four.
Right.
The one that won the least, one.
Right.
In that order. The one with the most points will be the one that will be ranked number one.
So, just on the total score?
Yes.
Okay.
So they just want, they just want the ranking.
There's a place in the bottom for your signature also.
It shouldn't take you long, right? Not like last time.
So you, you want them ranked by numbers? Okay.
Now, while Andres is doing arithmetic over there, eh? Arithmetic, doing the math, let's, let's talk a little bit about the item we're considering is, is the marketing. As we discussed earlier, it's very important that we stay in the, in the, in the race. You know, in today's environment, in today's world, marketing, commercials, and things of the sort are very important to, to gain your customer base. And apparently, the district now, or the schools, have come to a point where there is competition. So that being said, we're in the, in the process of hiring a company that will come in and assist us in, in, in gaining students and, and getting a, a better profile for our district and, and, and a way to highlight all of the good things that we have going on here in Westlaco. And we'll just await for Andres to finish tallying the, the scores. That way, we can find out who it is that
Just so I will understand this, on the cost, you have four firms, and I'm not gonna mention the amount, but, but one is, one is $15,000, one is $1 million, right? And then one is $6,500 per month?
Yeah, split one, two, and three.
And then one is $45,000 for three months?
Correct.
Okay.
Did Carlos take off?
Carlos?
Yes.
You might wanna give us some highlight on, on what, what your plan is on
Right, well, I think, we've been, we're looking into this since October, the committee has. We actually got it started with Dr. Leo back then, and one of the things we, we are looking at is doing some research first. We need to find out what the community feels, how they feel about us, how they feel about Westlaco ISD, and then what is it that they're looking for in a school district? You know, is it, is it bullying? Is it smaller classes? Why are they leaving to these charter schools? Is it academics? Is it athletics? We really don't know that. We have anecdotal information that says, yes, my child left to Idea Academy because, you know, they were bullied, or because there's a smaller classroom, or because they're gonna go to college. But do we actually know exactly what is the message that needs to be told out there? What is the general consensus that the whole community is looking for? What are they looking for in a school district? So the first thing we need to do is we need to do some research. We need to go out there, we need to do some polls, we need to do some surveys, we need to, we need to talk to these individuals and ask them, what are they looking for in a school district? Maybe out of 500 people, we're gonna find out, yes, it is extracurricular activities. Then we know that we're gonna focus our message on extracurricular activities, or maybe it's bullying, or maybe they need quality teachers, maybe they're looking for a quality teacher, so our message is gonna be, we have the best teachers. Because we all know that we do have the best school district in Westlaco. Also, we need a company that is gonna be able to connect with the community, not just come up with a video, but to actually connect with them emotionally, because that's how you sell a product. And like Dr. Canales said, we have a lot of passion and we have a lot of enthusiasm here, and we need to be able to spread that with our community here and let them know, you know, what is going on here, through that emotional connection. And I feel that the company that we ranked number one, that they have the capability of doing that, with their creativity, with their experience, and also with their connection to UTRGV. UTRGV just went through a total rebranding, and we're gonna be able to get some insight into that as well.
Just 'cause I wanna get your insight on a question. A member of the public asked me, after watching our last workshop on the, on K West, someone asked me, he said, if we have K West, why do we need to hire a marketing firm? K West has such a great job already. Is there something that, I mean, you think that the marketing, I mean, you do do a great job? I mean, the quality of the stuff you post on Facebook is excellent. Is there something you think the marketing firm can, can help us with, or do you think we can handle this on our own?
Absolutely. First of all, like I said, we need to find out what the message needs to be. What, what is it that the community wants to hear? What is it that they're looking for? Whatever that is, I'm sure we can service that. Okay, the second thing is, we have 3,500 people that follow us on Facebook. You know, we need to, we need to be able to target the entire community of Westlaco, and that's gonna be, you know, through, through what ways? Is it gonna be through billboards? Is it gonna be through radio ads? Is it gonna be through newspaper ads? Is it gonna be geo-targeting? You know, is it gonna be more online? Is it gonna be on the internet? That is something that an expert in the business who's been doing this their whole life in these marketing companies, that's what they do. They know where the people are. They know where we need to target them. Is it the, is it the young couple that listens to the radio between 9:00 and 11:00 o'clock in the afternoon? Well, I don't know that, because I'm, you know, I'm a news guy. I'm promoting our school district through K West, but that's what they do their whole lives, and that's why I believe we do need a marketing company. I think they need to come in here for a year or so, they show us the ropes, they help us refine our message, and then we take the message ourselves between K West and Public Relations, and then we start to buy our own media, and we move that forward. But I do think that we need to invest in this at this time, and if we're able to just have a couple of kids that come this way, we all know, you know, what the ADA is, we all know what that investment, that return on investment will be, and it will be significant if we can get several, several of our kids back. That's just in one year, but think about it over 12 years, in having those children in our school system.
Okay, we're ready to move forward. Thank you, Carlos. Bob, I have one question for you. In some construction projects, we're able to, if our first pick does not work out and/or their dollars are not what we need for them to be
You're right.
Are we able to move
When you negotiate with the first one and that doesn't work out, then you can go to the second.
Go to the second one? And that works here also?
It should.
Okay.
I haven't seen proposals that went out or advertised, but I would take a look.
Okay.
Would you recommend that we not select one tonight, then? Just rank them?
Well, I think you rank them and then give the administration
A direction.
Negotiate with number one.
Okay, okay. Because the proposal item says we select. That's why I was thinking, if we select one tonight, we don't have the ability to negotiate.
Okay, the ranking is as follows. Coming in as number one, we have Pink Eight Media. Coming as number two, we have Image House Media. Number three is Richard Carburg Incorporated out of Houston, and then number four is Stradagir, Stradagar, out of Addison, Texas. So the ranking is there, and we can move forward.
I'll move to accept the rankings.
Okay.
As per administration negotiating the, the contract.
Okay.
Is that fine? Give administration to negotiate.
To move forward to the number second, if, if they can't come to a agreement. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a, a motion by Andrew Gonzalez and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to accept the ranking and instruct administration to, to work through a mutual agreement, and if not amicable, to move forward on, on the ranking as, as has been presented. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action to renew district's agreement with Miracle Medical Supply to provide diabetic testing supplies and chronic disease management services for the district's self-funded employee benefit plan. Dr. Canales.
Okay, for this portaged item, we have Mike, Mr. Delarosa.
I move to accept, to approve the renewal.
I'll second. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think for the public, just for the public's knowledge, this, this allows our employees to get diabetic testing supplies, right, to, to say like a preventative issue.
Yeah. Who, who did the second? Was that Andrew?
Oscar.
Oscar? Yeah. Okay, we have a motion by Patrick and a second by Oscar to approve the agreement with Miracle Medical Supply to provide diabetic testing supplies and chronic disease management services for the district's self-funded, self-employed benefit plan. Any discussion? I do. Mikey, has there been any, any issues, happy customers, everybody's, no, no complaints?
No issues that I'm aware of, sir.
Everything's flowing.
Yes, sir. They do, they do, they do a good job.
Okay. Okay, that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action to non-renew risk management and consulting agreement with Valley Risk Consulting Incorporated at the end of the initial term. Dr. Canales.
Okay, this is also a discussion item. We're looking for a possible action of the non-renewal for the risk management. Mike Delarosa works closely with that risk management, so we're here to address it.
I believe the, the discussion that Dr. Canales and I had was, currently, we're on a fixed fee schedule with the current consultant, and he does do a very good job for us. However, moving forward cognizantly, considering expenses, there are peaks when we do, when we do utilize the services, and there are some times when it's not as utilized. So we'd like to look at moving, going to an as-needed or hourly basis versus a flat fee.
When's the end of the initial term, Mike?
April, at the end of April.
Oh, just, okay. So, is that what?
April 15.
Okay.
Okay. So move.
Second.
There's a motion by Isidoro and a second by Patrick to non-renew risk management and consulting agreement with Valley Risk Consulting Incorporated at the end of the initial term. Any discussion?
I have one question. Were they given a chance, since you're considering this, a chance to resign before they come on the agenda?
No, sir.
Did you give them that chance?
I don't, no, sir.
Why not?
I don't think they'd want, I would, wanna think that they wouldn't want to resign. I mean, they do a very good job for us. I believe that the discussion that Dr. Canales and I had was, we just wanted to utilize their services differently.
But they won't be on the agenda to be terminated. That's what you're doing. You're being terminated, not renewed.
According to legal
I would have hoped, I haven't talked to anyone, but I'm just thinking, give them a chance to resign. Then they resign, you don't need the, you don't need the agenda either.
Don't we have a, like, the insurance is coming up, like, pretty quick already?
We will be going out for RFPs, yes.
RFPs?
Very soon.
And this is a time that we actually need this consultant?
Yes, we will utilize him until, of course, the end of his initial term, and then have, give him the opportunity to, to submit for the business again. And then, of course, if he's still, in fact, here, he can continue on and we can move forward with, with what we're doing.
So it's more pricing factor?
Yes, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Yes, to move to, we discussed to move to as needed, and as needed with, with peaks, you know, during the year.
Okay. I'm okay with that, but I'm just saying, you know, this company gave them a chance to resign if they want to. But now, now they're here, they're, they've been terminated, really.
Well, it's, uh
They're non-renewed.
The, the, the idea was to
If I may, it's a one-year contract. It's up April 15.
Right.
So it's not a question of really terminating.
Well, I think it is. You know, I think it is. Give them a chance to resign. Well, I think it is, okay? I'm not gonna argue with you. Just give them a chance.
How is this gonna look on his, on his record? I mean, you know, he does a fantastic job. I mean, if, and I think what you're saying is that, you know, we, we wanna utilize them only when we need them, when, right now is when we actually do need them.
And he
Yes, sir. I mean, I don't know what other options we can do. I mean, I would hate to hurt his reputation.
Well, you know, and, and I hear everybody here, yet it's not a, it's not getting fired. I mean, he's getting, he's just not getting renewed.
Same difference, same thing. Well, I'm ready for the vote.
Whatever, whatever.
The motion's made, a second, I'm, I'm ready.
Motion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. No. I'm gonna vote no. Motion carries. Item D. Thank you, Mike.
And, and this, and this one is to go out for action to competitively procure insurance consulting, consulting services on an as-needed basis, not a flat rate per year, but as needed.
Okay.
I move to approve this motion with, with the caveat that the board will interview the consulting services and rank them.
Okay, we have a motion by Patrick.
Your motion is for the board to rank?
Yeah.
To, to review and rank.
Yes, for the board to rank and review.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to competitive procure insurance consulting services on an as-needed basis, allowing the board to rank? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Was there something added to that, or that was it?
Review.
The board will interview and rank, just like we did with the marketing services and the engineering services.
Allowing the board to interview and rank the firms to be hired on an as-needed basis. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. E, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the proposal for the purchase and installation of a paint booth for career technical education, Kate Automotive Class CSP number 17-03-29. Andres?
Yes, Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, members of the board, this item is, the board had approved before to go out for proposals on this item, to purchase a paint booth for the CET department, and we went out for proposals. We put a package together, Mr. Carmona, the instructor, helped us put it together, the instructor from STC, and we sent them out and we only got one response. Napa from Macallan, they provided the proposal we wanted. We looked at him and we feel comfortable with it. The company has done this type of work in other high schools and industry, and we also will have a mechanical engineer that's gonna help us evaluate, submit, when they submit them to us, how they're gonna build a paint booth, so he can review them before construction takes place of it. We'd like to recommend the company, Napa, Macallan, for this item.
Is this for automotive?
Yes.
Right?
Was this the item that we talked about probably in December, that the EPA was moving for new regulations with the spray paint or the paint of the vehicles?
Yes.
Is this for a full car?
Miss Avila back there.
Full car, a paint booth for a full car, or?
Yes, it's to paint the cars.
No, but the complete car, the whole car is what he's asking. So the whole car fits in there.
Yes, yes.
I'll move to accept.
Second.
The only discussion I'd like to get is, are you all comfortable with the price?
Yes.
You think it's competitive?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we have a
And the funds are coming from CET?
Oh, what?
The funds to pay?
It'll be from CET.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Andrew and a second by Isidoro on the approval of the proposal for the purchase and installation of the paint booth for career technical education, automotive class CSP 1703-29. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Now they're gonna have a list of cars now.
Yeah, I can bring your car.
Miss Avila, how many classes do we have of auto collision? That's just a question.
We have three.
Three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
F, discussion and possible action to, one, proceed F, discussion and possible action to, one, proceed with the final plan of finance, and two, select a method of sale for approximately seventeen million maintenance tax notes for the purchase of school buses, other district vehicles, equipment, and certain renovation projects.
Andres?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Andres.
Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, members of the board, this is the item that we had discussed with the board before about our facility projects. We had mentioned that we have fifty million dollars in our fund balance assigned for facilities that are the need that we wanted to use for the project that we had. And we had talked about borrowing seventeen million dollars in maintenance tax notes to help us with the project that are considered renovation projects and also equipment. And so we had money already set aside for computers or school buses, so we can use those, put them into purchase with the loan, and use the money available for new construction, because the loan did not allow new buildings to be built with it. And so we have a couple of projects coming up that are new, cannot be used with this money. So that's what this item is about. Mr. Vela, then I'll go over the presentation. That's the copy that I gave you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Lopez, President, members of the board, Dr. Canales, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Chris Vela with First Southwest Company, financial advisors to the district for the record. I take your attention to Slide three, which is the municipal market update. I want to point out to you the little box on the left, which is the bond buyers' index. And it will show you that in July of last year, the rates were at the slowest that we've seen them in a long, long time, in rates of around two eighty. You can see that the current rates are at a three ninety-two, the twenty-year average at a four fifty-nine, and the twenty-year max at six oh nine. So this is a picture for the last twenty years where the twenty bonds selected under this index. Moving on to Page five, the limited maintenance tax note series seventeen plan of finance. The Westlaco Independent School District intends to issue the limited maintenance tax note series seventeen-four, as Mr. Sanchez alluded to, purchase of school buses, other district vehicles, equipment, and certain renovation projects, and paying the cost of issuing the notes. The district will request a limited tax rating from Fitch and Standard and Poor's ratings for the notes. Currently, the district's unlimited tax is rated double A minus by Fitch and A plus by Standard and Poor's. Insurance on the notes will be considered. First Southwest, a division of Hilltop. The financial advisor will determine if insurance benefits the transaction. A decision will be made once bids are received and analyzed. Now, you will recall that when we sell your refund, we sell your refunding bonds or your new bonds, we always apply for the permanent school fund guarantee, which is the ultimate in terms of credit enhancement for school districts issuing debt. However, since we're issuing not on the debt service side, but on the MNO side, the maintenance tax notes are not eligible for the permanent school fund guarantee, hence the need to go into the private market for insurance to enhance the credit of the district. That decision will be analyzed on a mathematically, on an arithmetic basis, and we will determine if it makes sense for the district to purchase or not to purchase and make the recommendation to your staff. Tax exempt fixed rates throughout the maturity, total project fund, we will fund your construction fund with seventeen million dollars. Twenty-year amortization, which is the maximum allowed under the statute. Interest will be payable semi-annually on February the fifteenth and August the fifteenth, beginning on February fifteenth of eighteen, approximately a year from now. Principal will be payable annually on February fifteenth, beginning on February fifteenth of eighteen, and a ten-year call option, we've discussed call options before, but that's the opportunity that the district has to call the bonds with, with going forward from that point. Anything before that is, you cannot call or refund, if you will. The analysis shown in the subject was derived based on pricing views as of March the first, plus half of, half, fifty basis points on interest costs. So it's current, plus fifty. So that kind of gives us a little bit of room there. Obviously, there's a lot of things happening on the economic sector that are driving rates, so we want to make sure that, as we always do. Of course, it's subject to change. The next page is Page seven. If you look at your, your table on the left, the outstanding limited tax debt service, that is what is currently outstanding for the district. You will notice that for seventeen, it's two million sixty-one, and then it drops to a million seven thirty-two, and then for nineteen, to a million one. You'll notice on the right-hand side, the other box that's proposed, we kind of wrap around the existing debt to kind of keep your payments at the same level. That was the objective that Mr. Sanchez wanted us to do. So you'll see that we go from two million sixty-one, that's your current payment, to two six oh seven, and then we drop back to two one six four, or approximately a hundred thousand dollars above your current level. The par amount of the bonds, sixteen million two forty. The notes will be sold at a premium that will generate a million dollars in premium, total sources seventeen two six six. Project fund deposit, as I mentioned before, seventeen million dollars. Cost of issuance, a hundred and twenty-five. Underwriters discount, a hundred and thirty-eight. Rounding, total sources, estimated cost, four point one zero three, obviously with that fifty basis points caveat that I mentioned earlier. And the pricing views are as of March the first, plus the fifty, and we're talking about a closing date of June the sixth, where that means when funds will be delivered to the district on hand and ready for disbursement. Now, there's one other thing that we also need to remember, that there was a reimbursement resolution that was passed. So if there's some items that the district wants to pursue and fund, you can fund them out of cash on hand and get reimbursed from bond proceeds, so not to hold up your, your construction project. That was the purpose of the reimbursement resolution. The financing team on Page nine, financial advisor for Southwest, bond counsel, Bickerstaff Heath Delgado, paying agent, US Bank Houston, rating agencies, Fitch, and Standard and Poor's. Underwriters to be determined by the district, underwriters counsel to be chosen by the senior underwriter. Method of sales, obviously, there's three types of sales, competitive, negotiated, and private placement. Each one of them has a discussion. This is a section that we always include in our presentations. On Page twelve, you have the discussion on competitive versus negotiated. On Page thirteen, we discuss competitive versus negotiated. And then we discuss on Page fourteen, the negotiated sale, underwriting members, which is a senior manager, co-managers, and selling group. And of course, selecting an underwriting syndicate, these are some of the points on Page fifteen that should be taken into consideration. On Page sixteen, you have the list of the underwriters that have recently actively marketed to the district. And on Page seventeen, you have the list of the underwriters with experience at Westlaco since two thousand and seven. The last page on the presentation is on Page nineteen, which is the schedule of events. On February the thirteenth, the Board of Trustees considers and approves the reimbursement resolutions, which you have done already, that I mentioned. On March the ninth, regular board meeting, present the plan of finance. The Board of Trustees considers and approves final plan of finance and directs staffs and consultants to move forward with the plan of finance. Board considers and approves method of sale. And on April the tenth, the Board of Trustees considers and approves appointment of underwriters if negotiated sale. And on May the eighth, we will price the notes and bring the pricing results of the transaction to the board, as we always do. And the closing on June the sixth, and the rest are payment dates. I believe, Mr. Sanchez, you want to discuss on the method of sale?
The agenda item mentioned up, we'd like to recommend negotiated sale method for the board to approve it. And to approve it, we proceed with the plan of finance, so we can move on with the loan.
And with this loan, you're paying how much, how much a year in August? You're going to put how much, how much in the budget for next year?
It's just going to be about half a million dollars more than what we have.
So you're going to budget half a million dollars?
Yes, sir.
The caps payments that you had before?
The cap payment that we have for eight hundred and sixty-one million.
Were we paid off, paid off when?
Oh, there's one that's paying off at the end of this year. It's worth three hundred thousand.
So you'll have how much to pay the half a million dollars?
The total loan for this is going to be one point three, but we're going to free up one point two of the three loans that are going to expire this year, the next year, and the following year.
Okay.
So the next three years, you get?
But for August, you have how much saved from the caps payment?
At the end of this year, we'll save three hundred thousand.
No, no, just in August, in August.
We're going to save three hundred, because we're going to finish one payment.
So you're going to add two hundred more to the budget?
We're going to, no.
The first year, the first year?
Five hundred for the first year.
Yeah, but you're saving three hundred?
Yes, sir, because the payment is eight hundred.
Oh, it's eight hundred.
The new payment is eight seventy-five for the first year.
You said it was half a million.
Yes, sir.
So it's eight hundred thousand?
Yeah, the first year, yes. You got to arrange that we-
So in August, in August, you're going to put how much money into the budget? Additional money?
Half a million more.
Half a million more?
Yes, sir.
And you have that money?
Yes, sir. We will have.
My understanding of this seventeen million dollar loan, I guess you could call it, is to finance some construction projects, like refinishing the roof and perhaps the Westlaco fan hall, things like that, right?
Yes, sir. Any and that is not new construction.
I generally just favor going into debt, especially because I'm paying off a lot of student loans right now, so I'm feeling the pain. But my concern is that we pay for this out of budgeted funds and not raise the folks' taxes in order to pay for this.
Yes.
Do you feel confident, moving forward, especially in the climate that we discussed earlier where we lost a few students, that we can pay for this without raising the folks' taxes?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm not holding you to a guarantee, but-
And I'm using this because we already used one point two million dollars of our budget to pay debt. So we use, basically, what we're already using, we're just incurring an additional, about half a million more. Because we're going to pay off three loans.
Another thing, aren't you paying off, there doesn't one pay off this year, another one next year?
Yeah, we're paying three years, three loans over the next three years. That's going to free up one point two million.
How long you think it'll take to pay this off?
We're looking at twenty million for this.
No, I mean, how, what, the length of time?
I meant twenty years, twenty years, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. And this is to bring up the money we need for the project we need right now.
So now you have thirty-four million dollars? Seventeen, seventeen.
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Thirty-four million.
I alluded to it earlier about, to Andres, about, you know, getting with you and discussing, is this what you did in Elza to be able to build?
Yes.
The ballparks and stuff?
Yes.
So, so we're okay with it?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're okay.
Okay.
And the interest rate right now is low, correct?
And going up.
I mean, at this time?
Interest rates are, it's hard to calculate what, what interest rates are going. What we have done in the, in the presentation is that we have stated that interest rates are padded by- Okay.
So the extra money, I think you were talking with Dr. Rivera a few minutes ago about, we're going to have to free up an extra two hundred thousand dollars?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand, and some of that's going to come from debt that's, that we're going to pay off, right?
Well, no, that would be the net.
It's eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand total.
The first payment is eight hundred thousand.
But we're going to save three hundred thousand from past, from the, from the past caps payments.
Yes. On, on Page seven, the presentation, it shows, the first year we're going to pay eight hundred and seventy-five thousand in interest alone, the next year, a million sixty-two, then a million three, from then on until the end of the loan. We're freeing up one point two million, so not going to be a lot different between what we pay already to anyone.
But the first year, it'll be half a million dollars, because you're going to have to add to the budget.
The first year, yes.
Do you know where we find the cut, or is to take that five hundred thousand from?
I don't want to mention that, no. Yes, well, we can take care of it. It's not a problem. It's a small amount, I'll leave. Right now, we transferred four million dollars for the construction fund this past year. We're not going to transfer as much, so we can put money here, because this money is basically for the construction that we're going to do.
Okay.
That's where it's coming from.
I just don't, you know, I, I'll take your word for it. I just don't want to, you know, next year we have to cut like a arts program or something like that for-
And I'll put more information in the update, the week after week, about some screen breakers. They're going to be there for tomorrow. But I'll put something to hopefully make it easy to understand.
Okay.
So in Part Two, what are you recommending on the method of sale?
The negotiated sale method, which is the one we done when we do the refunding bonds.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Dr.
See, and then select the method of sale, the one you mentioned.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera, a second by Patrick Kennedy to approve the sale and to use the-
Select the method of sale.
Recommended, recommended by administration, the negotiated sale method of, I said sale a lot, the negotiated sale method of sale for the maintenance tax note.
And also the final plan of finance, which is presented.
And the final plan of finance as presented by administration. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item G, discussion and possible action to select architects for previously approved facility projects. Dr. Canales.
Okay, at a previous board meeting, we, you ranked and selected five architects, and we did award to ERO Architects the roofing project for this board agenda item. We'd like possible action to select architects for the, some of the other projects that are noted. And we have a total of eight that will require an architect. Okay, Mr. Sanchez.
Dr. Canales, are you going to hire all five firms for different projects?
That's what we're asking for tonight, just the action to select architects and to look at the, still eight projects, remaining projects.
All five?
Of five, that were already selected and ranked.
Then you're going to go ahead and assign them different projects?
Yes, I don't know whether we have enough projects at this point, Dr. For everybody, being that some of them are the same schools. But there is more projects coming after this. Is that correct, Andres?
Right now, this is it that we have.
I know, but once we get the-
The other item, we have some other projects that are related to engineering, but that's not for architects.
What about when, when you get the additional monies? Is that for this?
No, that including this.
That's including this, okay.
Well, he still got a new fan hall.
I'll take the motion, Mr. President.
Okay.
I would like to award the WEHS Fan Hall to ERO. The Westlaco High School Field House to Gomez. The girls' locker rooms for Westlaco High School and Westlaco East High School to PBK. The Kate Calvio Complex remodeling to ROFA. And the security huts at Westlaco High School and Westlaco East to Alvarado. And the pavilions for the three middle schools to Alvarado as well. And that's my motion.
Is everybody getting part of it?
Yes. I think so. I think he utilized all four, right?
Five.
All five?
Yeah. Okay.
Second. Is that your motion, Oscar?
Yes, sir, that is my motion.
That's a second.
That's a second.
We have a motion by Oscar and a second by Isidoro, and I'll read it to approve, to, to give the projects as, as he listed, and I'll rename them. Item number two, five security huts to Alvarado. Item number five, girls locker rooms, Westco High School, Westco East High School to PPK. Number seven, Westco East High School band hall to ERO. Number eight, Westco High School Field House to Gomez Mendez. Number nine, Kate Calvio Complex remodel to RFA. And number twelve, pavilion and three middle schools to Alvarado. Any discussion?
Who's doing Roosevelt?
We don't have that one.
We don't have that one?
Not yet. It's on here.
You want to add somebody, Doc?
No, no, I'm just saying, so you don't have any one for number eleven, for Roosevelt? No architect?
Not, not yet, not at this time. Well, you didn't make a motion. For what? You want to, you want to add? An architect to Roosevelt?
Well, I'm good.
Do you have the money, Andres? Do you cover all each project?
Yes, sir. I, I'd like to add on the, the Kate Calvio Complex project is a small project, it's not a big one. Yeah, so that you know, it's a very small project.
Now, the, the other thing, and talking back about Roosevelt, Dr. Rivera, we just had a workshop, and there was some discussion, and I think I even discussed it with you a little bit, about possibly doing what we had done previously with Sam Houston and Ibarra, which would be to build a new, new school on the north side of town, and possibly relocate those, the students momentarily while we redo Roosevelt. And I think it'd be very hard, if we do decide to go that way, to do something to Roosevelt with the students on site. So I think we, we need to hold back on Roosevelt for right now, and, and see what the, what the board's going to recommend on moving forward.
Andres, what work was going to be done at Roosevelt? What was the plan for that?
To replace building B, yeah, all the, all the building, classroom wing that they're close to Bridge Street.
I'm okay with holding off on Roosevelt, because I like the idea, kind of like their data clerk mentioned about if we built the new school, putting them over there while we rebuilt Roosevelt or add that wing, and then move them back to Roosevelt, kind of like y'all did prior to me being on the board.
I, I like that idea also, we can't act on it, really, really almost can't even discuss it, because it's not on a, an agenda item. So, but for right now, we haven't chosen an architect, and that's okay?
We can do it later.
Yeah. Okay, so we had a motion by Oscar and a second by Isidoro. And I just presented the, the names of the architectural firms. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
I'm going to say no, I'm not too sure yet on, I'm going to say no.
Okay. Motion carries. Item, item H, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of an extension of the depository contract with Texas National Bank for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen biennium, RFB number one five dash zero five dash forty-seven, or to release a request for proposals for bank depository services for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen biennium. Andres?
Yes, Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, members of the board. This item is, has to do with a depository contract that we have. Every two years, we have to go, either go out for proposals or bid, or extend the contract for the depository bank. Right now, we have Texas National Bank, they got approved for, in two thousand fifteen, for the sixteen, seventeen biennium. And August thirty-one is the end of the contract that we have, so we need to go out for proposal, we need to notify TA in the event we change banks, that we changing who we going with, information, we have to fill out forms, putting, putting that information, bank information, because the money that they send us goes through, through wire. And that's what we come to the board now.
Do you have a recommendation?
Yes, we're recommending that we extend the contract, we had worked well with Texas National, we hadn't worked with them before.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second. I understand, we're not earning any interest on the money that we have deposited there?
Yeah, there's four million dollars that we have without earning interest in exchange for not having any service charges to our accounts.
Right, but I noticed that, I said that we could earn a potential seventy-one thousand in interest, but pay forty-eight thousand in service.
Let me, let me go ahead and proceed, because we do have a motion and a, and a second, and then you can continue.
Sure.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Oscar, to proceed with the, as, as?
As recommended by administration?
As recommended with Texas National Bank for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen biennium. Okay, any discussion? Go ahead.
Sure. So, I mean, overall, we could potentially, even with service charges, we could still make what, like, little about twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars in interest?
Well, when, when the, the board, the, two years ago, the board set aside a committee, three members of the board, the superintendent and myself, to go over the proposals, and we made a recommendation. After we went with the bank, we had to make a decision, that we want to go with paying service charges and earn a little bit of interest, which was almost nothing, because the interest rates were very low, or maintaining four million dollars without earning interest by not having service charges done. Back then, we were paying between two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars per month in, in charges, so it was going to be a big amount. And we said, the other bank that we had, we had two bids, was requiring us to maintain six million dollars. I said, well, that one is too much money to keep there, this is only four million. You compare the four million at the rates that the pool were paying at the time, and it was very little, the savings of the service charge was more than what we were going to lose in interest. Now, the interest rates have gone up, so we all end up losing about eleven thousand a year. Twenty-three, twenty-three thousand is over two years. So it cost us eleven thousand at the interest rate that there are right now, if we keep the four million there. If we go out for bid, the interest rates might go higher later on, we don't know, or we'll tie it at whatever rate it is when we do the contract. But also, the service charges could go up higher as well, and we don't know that, if we go out for proposals. And one of the things that's been discussed a lot is deposits for school districts, like any other government, had to be pledged with securities, because there is mortgage loans, federal mortgage loans, security dues, treasury bills, things like that, that are very good, crazy worth, and those cost a lot of money to banks to buy them, to use at scolar for all deposits. And a lot of banks are shying away from that. So what they're doing is increasing the bank fees, the charges they do every month. So if we go out for proposal, there's a chance that the rate will be higher, and the net saving that we have may not be as much as we think it is right now. That's what we said, we don't know what it is, and being that we're doing well with the bank, we'd like to recommend that we stay with it.
Andres, has, has the bank followed through as far as what they said, as having the extra ATM machines throughout our town, that our teachers can, can get to easier, as opposed to driving all the way across the way?
They have three, I believe, ATM machines throughout the town, yes.
Apart of the bank?
Beside the bank, yes.
Just for the board to consider, even though the, the value of the money in the bank stays static, four million dollars, we're actually losing money due to inflation, because that money's being devalued. So if we're not earning interest, we're losing the interest plus the devaluation on, on inflation. Just something to think about.
I think you had a, some arithmetic on, on your, on your report. What was, what was the difference in, in money that, it was like ten thousand a year or something like that?
Well, yes, it's twenty-three thousand over the two years, based on the rates on the pools right now.
Yeah, but we risk, we risk?
That we could lose using that rate, but if we go out for proposals, we might end up paying more in service charges. We'll end more in interest compared to the money we, if we were to invest it at the pool. All banks right now are holding, are requesting you to, requiring us to hold a certain amount without earning interest. Another bank asked us for six million, so we said, no, wait, no way, that's too much. And this one was four million in exchange for no service charges, so we liked it, we went that way. And if we extend the contract, we have to extend on the same terms, we cannot deviate anything. That's what I was making the calculation there.
Well, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Oscar, to proceed. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries. Item number eleven, closed meeting to discuss item A, personal matters, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four. Number one, employment of personnel, new hires. Number, item two, resignations. Item three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four and five five one point zero seven one. Item A, superintendent's recommendation for head football coach, athletic coordinator, Westlaco High School. Item B, superintendent's recommendation for band director at Westlaco High School. And the time is eight fifty-five, and this board is going into closed session. Time is nine forty-three, and we are back in open session. I want to give Rosemary a chance to change tapes. Item A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four. Item number one, employment of personnel, new hires. Dr. Canales.
I recommend to the board that we approve, as discussed in closed sessions, the employment of personnel, new hires.
So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Isidoro to approve the personnel new hires, second by Patrick. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item number two, resignations. Dr. Canales.
I recommend for approval of resignations discussed in closed session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Patrick and a second by Andrew, to approve the resignations as presented in closed session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four and five five one point zero seven one. Item A, superintendent's recommendation for head football coach, athletic director for Westlaco High School. Dr. Canales.
I'm recommending as the head coach, athletic coordinator for Westlaco High School, Michael Salinas.
So move.
Second. We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Isidoro Nieto, to approve Michael Salinas as head football coach and athletic coordinator for Westlaco High School. Any discussion?
We had a lot of good applicants, but, you know, in, in any decision, you have to make the best recommendation, and I think the committee selected an excellent person.
All those in favor of Mr. Salinas, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item B, superintendent's recommendation for band director at Westlaco High School. Dr. Canales.
My recommendation for band director of Westlaco High School is Rodrigo Lial.
I'll move. Second.
No.
My recommendation is Rodrigo Lial for band director of Westlaco High School.
And I make the motion? Made a motion by Oscar, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Okay, again, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, adjournment.
Wait, do we have another?
The fine art?
No.
Oh, no.
That was already done.
Yeah, it was in the deliberation regarding appointment and?
Oh.
So I'll move, okay. Item number thirteen, so move? Okay, the time is now nine forty-seven, this meeting is over. Thank you.